Can we please stand for the salute to the flag? Guys, can we please keep it down? I would like to advise those present that the notice of this regular meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken has been provided to the public in accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice to this regular meeting of Thursday, April 13, 2023 was given by publication of the annual meeting notice of the authority with amendments as necessary and was sent to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger as a public notice on Monday, April 3, 2023. As notification to the general public of the meeting, sent to the city clerk of Hoboken on Monday, April 3, 2023, with a copy of the agenda to be posted on the bulletin board in City Hall, Hoboken Library and Hoboken Police Department, and posted on the authority website on Monday, April 3, 2023. I direct the minutes of this meeting to state that I have announced that adequate notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. Do you want to do the roll call?
Ready for the roll call? Roll call Reverend Anthony Forbes.
President.
No, 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 no.
Andrew Bastado.
Mr. Bastado.
President.
Aaron Lewit.
President.
Barbara Reyes.
Here.
Michael Russo. James Sanford. Erica Seitzman.
President.
I'd just like the record to note that Commissioner Russo is running late, but he will be here. I would also like to let everyone know that's here today, the parents that are here with the basketball team, that we will be taking pictures and these pictures will be posted on our website, they're going to be used for our newsletters. So if you do not want your child to participate in taking pictures, we just ask that you pull them to the side, but if everyone's okay, then we'll just go move on with taking the pictures. I'd like to suspend the agenda because we have the Hoboken Elite Team who won the state championship this past March. The majority of the children are from the Hoboken Housing Authority as well as the City of Hoboken, and we'd like to honor them at this time. Motion? Can someone second the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
So we're so excited and proud and honored that for all the things that you've been doing, thank you so much for mentoring and creating Hoboken Elite. Hoboken Elite was created by First Marquis.
Hi, thank you.
Marquis, come here. Come on, come here. Thank you so much for all that you have been doing, of all the things in housing to keep, to mold all of these young men to become future commissioners, future presidents of the United States. Thank you so much. It's my understanding you won the, tell us, what did you win? You won the fifth grade championship in the state of all, the state of all New Jersey? Against how many players? How many teams?
About two teams. A lot of teams dropped out, but that's not to take away the hard work that they put in to bring home the championship. As you can see, the ball's right there. It was a whole weekend.
How many games?
Three games, right? Three games. It started out on Friday evening, which was a stretch to get there, but we made it and we won it, we won that game, and then we went on to the second round and the championship on Sunday.
Thank you so much. And now you've got your part of the community.
Yes.
Amazing, so we look forward to even more. So I'm gonna give everybody a certificate, but first we want to thank the coaches. Marquis. The coaches. Tell us your name, please.
Taishan Handberry. Ryan Ross.
Thank you so much. Give a round of applause. Larry Scott.
Larry. LaBierre. Jaleel.
Levi.
Levi.
Levi. Carlos.
Carlos.
Richard. Valen.
Valen.
Christian. Lamir. We're just gonna have a picture and we're gonna have a pizza party for you at a different time. Okay, let's get a big photo. Barbara, Aaron, anybody want to be in the photo? Director? Aaron, you want to be in the photo? Just hold your certificates. Here comes Aaron. Aaron, you have this one. Well, Marquis?
One, two, three. Cheese. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can we get one with the parents here inside with their kids too? Come on, parents. Come on. Come on, parents. Let's go. Real quick, real quick with the parents.
Sam, take a picture.
And grandparents too. Everybody together. Say cheese, parents.
Cheese.
Thank you.
Good job.
Guys, I'd just like to take a minute to thank the coaches, because if it wasn't for Marquis Handberry thinking about our kids and actually giving them a brighter reason to play basketball, they were only playing against Hoboken. He decided to make this team, this travel team, to show them something different, to show them that they can be the best that they can be. And without his commitment and his coaches, Mr. Taishan Handberry and Mr. Ross, and the parents, like they said, these kids could not have made it to where they are today. So we need more men like Mr. Handberry, like Mr. Ross, like all these parents that are involved to continue to be involved with our children so that they can stay on the right track. So thank you, they're dear to me, my kids play, my son plays on the field, and I love these guys. So thank you, guys, for everything that you guys do. Guys, if you'd like to stay for the meeting, you are more than welcome. If you guys would like to leave, you can also leave, it's up to you guys. We're actually going to be doing the public portion now. Did everyone sign up to speak? I want to make sure that everyone that wants to speak has signed up before we start calling names. Each person will have five minutes, and I just ask that everyone please be respectful of our director, the commissioners, and our staff. We have four of them, we still have a four. Patricia Waiters, Louis, thank you so much.
Hi, Pat Waiters. Hi, Pat Waiters. Real quick before Marquis leave, I told him I would be supporting this. I just left the Board of Freeholders, Board of Commissioners meeting, and they had a resolution on there for $143,000 for basketball or whatever pertaining to the summer program. I don't know how it's been utilized in the past, but I'm asking the Board of Commissioners and the parents that just came up here and took pictures and everybody else, let's come out and rally around Marquis, he deserved it, his brother, Taishan. Our kids have been faced with that pandemic just like us, a lot of us adults, and it's a struggle for them. Mental issues, they turn into drugs, they turn into the streets, and it's nothing for our kids to do. A little program here or there is not sufficient enough, not to me, not for the amount of money that I'm seeing floating through, and I feel bad for any mom, any mom's a worse nightmare than spend that money later on a grave. We have to get active in our kids' lives. I just made them stop that resolution and table it, and two of it includes all of us. So I'm gonna ask you guys, and I ask Mike, please, give me a, start making some phone calls for the county, let them know that that Boys and Girls Club fight that we had last year, we're not doing it. The money's coming into Hoboken, you can utilize the Mama Johnson Field, you can utilize the basketball court, you can write a proposal tonight, ask them for that money, and include those things, because that's where our kids hang out at. And Ms. Reyes, you know with big respect, you be in the chair, your kids is involved in all of those activities. I want to see it continue, so they can have another leeway out besides the streets, the corner, and the casket. Thank you.
Might want to be there somewhere?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair. I'm Reverend Sorel. I'd just like to make a few comments on a few things. I know that they perhaps will be in the director's report, maybe the website, as well as perhaps newsletter, but I just want to follow up a few things if I can. Would like to know, for members of the public to know, the dates that were going to be announced would be water, pressuring, cleaning of the different locations of the housing, as well as, I'd like to also ask in regards to very important, the opening of the lists for, very important, the opening of the lists for the housing. If you could get a little bit more update on that, would be fantastic for members of the public to know, not just only for the top scale one, but the other, if there's any progress. If it's not on the agenda for him to speak or I don't speak today, I'm sure it could be on, like I said, on the website or the next newsletter, which I haven't seen this one, but I'll make sure I point it. As well as another thank you and congratulations for acknowledging the young men that are hopefully, like someone said, running for something or be a part of the community. This is their foundation, basketball, it's a sense of community for them, so I thank you for Hoboken Elite's recognition this evening, thank you very much. Now, I would also like to speak on, if again, if the director feels or anyone feels that you could, again, give a little more insight and color as to the progress, I know it's a word, progress, the redevelopment for the complexes in the housing, that would be a, you know, beneficial for the members of the public as well. So having said that, I also wanted to say, and I, this is now a point of personal objectivity. I was speaking to a technical person who takes a video, and I requested, or I mentioned to him that it would be better if the camera was facing members of the public as they speak, so that other members of the public can feel and hear their emotion and what they're saying and not their back. So I appreciate that you even taking care of it expeditiously just right at this moment, Chair. So if there's any color that you can give towards anything I said, I've appreciated, and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mrs. Sorel. I'm sure that the director will be addressing Hoboken in his report tonight. Jim, Jim Beck.
How do you spell the last name?
B is a big letter, B is on C. I'm James Beck, I live in Hoboken. I'm a friend of, I don't know, a God, a commission, and who I've known to fund a better waterfront.
I'm sorry, I didn't know.
Fund for a better waterfront. Mr. Lloyd has a long background in housing, portable housing, workforce housing, and I'm really delighted he's on this board. He's given me some information about the project that is in the formative stage in this regard to rebuilding and fixing, really rebuilding, the facilities the public housing has on the west side of town. And if I understand it correctly, he's going to make sure that nobody is displaced in the process, which I think is extremely important. And there's going to be housing for more than the folks that are just there, we're adding housing for workforce housing and others such. Having heard about it, I want to say it's really exceptional for this board and this city to be moving forward on this situation, it's a long, long been to work. I know that there's a housing crisis in this country, and the housing crisis in Hudson County and Hoboken, and this is an important step to help fix it. I also want to say, and because you folks are influential in the community, that Hoboken needs to do more. I live in a residential neighborhood, and I don't think it's appropriate to be building eight and 10 and 12 story buildings, but we have a horrific, we have over here on the northwest part of this town, lots of land, it's full of buses, and there are people who need homes more than the buses, you know, here in Hoboken. And I think that the city and the encouragement of you folks, whatever you can do, to push for housing in that area and to be willing to go up. We don't have any more land, there's no going out into the wheat field, like they do in Kansas, we have to go up, and I find that much objection to going higher is ill founded when it comes to the matter of housing questions. One other quick thing, it won't take you five minutes, we need to talk about. I, years ago, when the city was in the process of taking the OBSF site and building this two contiguous block park, and taking it to that purpose, once they had, there were two parcels, one on the outside of that, half of a block on the northwest side, I'm sorry, yeah, the southwest side and the northeast side. The city was, a contract signed, or about ready to sign it before the city council to, to let a contract to design the park and on that parcel, that half block, that is to the northeast, to plan a parking garage. I got in the morning and called the city council, and said, this is crazy, you don't put parking garage in on parks, you put housing on parks, and this is an opportunity for the city to build on that land, workforce housing, senior housing, portable housing, housing for people, not for cars, for the cars of the surge political fight. The city council underwent some agreement, surprised, but they did, and they pulled that section out of the contract. That lot still sits there, it's 10 years. My experience in Hoboken, which takes 10 years to get anything done, well, we're halfway there, and that's something important that many members of this board would be interested in helping push the city to move forward with that, because it complements everything else you do. Thank you.
Chairman, Chairman, somebody's got a phone or something going back here, and they got to shut it off.
I'm sorry, if anyone has a phone, can you please mute your phone, put it on vibrate? Thank you. If not, you would need to go outside with your phone. Thank you very much. Wanting to close public portion?
Second.
Chairman.
Roll call?
I guess.
All right. Anthony Forbes. Merlin Forbes. Andrew Bastado.
Yes.
Aaron Lewit.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Michael Russo. James Sanford. Erica Seitzman.
Yes. Director.
Ready for my report? Thank you, Chairperson. I'd like to start out tonight, can everyone hear me all right? Get my mic, get this microphone situated. I'd like to start out tonight with just a special comment, because my heart is aching tonight as we move into our warmer months. I wanted to take a moment to reflect on what happened at the Housing Authority this past Tuesday night at our main campus. At our main campus, we had a number of fights throughout our main campus, we had a number of groups, whether they were gangs, family, we're not sure exactly, but what I do know is I reviewed the video and it absolutely broke my heart. We've all seen the tragic consequences of violence last summer with the shootings on the Mama Johnson Field while children were playing on the field last year, not to mention the fatal shooting that took somebody's life at the Hoboken Housing Authority. These incidents have left us in shock and disbelief, and we are determined to do everything we can to prevent them from happening again this summer. We want to make it very clear to everyone that violence has no place at the Hoboken Housing Authority. It's our duty to work together, and that means staff, that means residents, police, community, all of us, to ensure that our community is safe, a safe and welcoming place for all. Because 30 people are fighting, we've got thousands of people that rely on us, the children, to live in a peaceful environment. Please have respect for each other. We cannot allow violence to be part of our daily lives, especially when it puts innocent children and families at risk. We cannot tolerate that behavior that threatens the well-being of our community, and we will actively enforce lease provisions accordingly. So yes, we're meeting with the police, yes, we're looking at lease provisions, but to that end, I'm urging everyone to look at themselves and to promote peace. It is up to each and every one of us, each and every one of our residents, to look at themselves and their families, and take responsibility for our actions, and to treat one another with respect and kindness. It's crucial to the health of our communities. I implore everyone to prioritize peace this summer. We ask you to not engage in violent behavior, and if you witness such, please report them to the Hoboken Police immediately. Please do not be involved, walk away. We do not need that type of behavior on our developments. We know they can make a difference if we can all work together through the goal. We thank you all for your cooperation, all the good folks are out there, and we look forward to a safe and peaceful summer, and we ask you to join us in this journey this year. We are gonna be working closely with the police, but it's not only enforcement, it's also looking for the future and the resources we can bring to empower our kids, to empower our groups to have a positive impact. So that was the statement I wanted to make at the beginning of our meeting tonight. I hope we can take that to heart and have a peaceful summer. I know our commissioners are already reaching out to groups that can come in and talk to the various factions that have some beef between themselves, and come to the table and talk it out rather than fight, because we do not want to see this as we go into summer. We need to have a different outlook on life, come to ourselves with a peaceful living environment. So thank you.
Director, before you continue with your report, my apologies, I just wanted to take a minute to ask everyone for a moment of silence, because this last month, we lost a few good people in our Housing Authority. A young lady, Hoboken High School senior, Madison Rose Ramos, lost her life, unfortunately. We also lost Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Joseph Andrews, and I apologize, because I knew him as Kiki. So I just want us, if we could just take a moment to just have a moment of silence for them, please.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes.
And not only that, on March 18th, we also revisited a tragic death that we had earlier in the year by dedicating our Marshall Drive Horseshoe in memory of Kaola Cologne. It was a great event, we had many, many people there. Kaola remains in our thoughts, we had tributes in the form of songs and prayers, it was a truly moving event. So we lose good people here, but we want to continue their peaceful efforts. On security issues, we continue to work with the police department. It just so happens that while the fight was going on Tuesday night on our property, we were having a security committee meeting with the Hoboken Police Department and with the chief, so a lot was going on at one time. We did review the limitations of the police department in enforcing Housing Authority policies, what they can do and what they can't do. We did talk about possibilities, we brainstormed some ideas, possibly reinstating a sign-in policy on Housing Authority property. I updated on our defensible space actions to the police. We talked about receiving more CAD reports from the police department, about bolstering our notice to quit with a required meeting with residents and HJA staff, and increased monitoring on the Housing Authority videos. We do expect to have the installation of additional lighting done in May, and we did have a round of meet and greets this past month. But the security subcommittee meeting was very active, it made a lot of progress with the police, and we're gonna continue to have those meetings, I think, as the summer progresses. I don't know if Commissioner Bastado or Commissioner Reyes wants to say anything else about that meeting, it was long and very productive, so we're gonna keep working on it.
I'd just like to kind of follow up on what the director said. The Hoboken Police Department is working diligently with us, with the Housing Authority, to address the issues that we are having down there. They are doing the best that they could. I, as a resident, could not be prouder of what they are doing and what the director is doing with what we have. So I know the director actually stated we had an incident on Tuesday. I know since Tuesday night until today, we have had officers nonstop on our property. They are everywhere, so they are in their vehicles, they are walking, they are walking the beat, they're talking to our residents. So they are trying the best we can, and all I can ask as a resident is we have to do our part. We cannot continue to blame the Housing Authority or the police department when we're seeing what's happening and we're not saying anything. So I think we as residents also have to take accountability, and to have change, we have to make it happen. So that's what I'd like to say.
Thank you so much, Mr. Reyes. On our Hoboken Housing Forward update, which is the renovation project, the planning group has hired rule and associates that are chosen by the city to do the redevelopment plan, they are working on that redevelopment plan, and that's basically where we are right now. They have got until August to complete it. We are meeting with them regularly, providing them information on our property, on our resident makeup, on our unit makeup, so we're meeting with them regularly. It's kind of, I kind of call it the crunch period in their reporting, so they're going ahead as a professional planning group, working on the information they got from our resident meeting we had last- they got from our resident meeting we had last month, from the information they got from presentation to the board. So that's all going on right now, kind of in their crunch time. We are, in the meantime, working on an RFP for special legal counsel. Matter of fact, that request for proposal for special legal counsel for development is out on the street. We expect that back, and we expect to be back to the board with the recommendation in May. Again, these are all parts of the puzzle piece of a redevelopment that have to be put in place as we move forward. We are also got an RFP going out for a capital plans needs study for the Housing Authority. This, in many ways, will take the place of the technical assistance we are now getting from HUD. As many of you know, we do have the Enterprise Partners, a very professional nationwide group that are working hand in hand with the Housing Authority. This is assistance provided directly by HUD. Part of that team is also HUD representation from a national level. So they're with us every week. They're with us every other week with a meeting. They're working with us consistently, but they're not going to be with us forever. So we are going to be publishing an RFP to have professional help for that phase. When the redevelopment study is done by the city, we'll be ready to take off and run it. So we'll have that in place when the redevelopment plan is done. We'll have a special legal counsel in place when the redevelopment plan is done. We are developing our RFP for developer partners. That's the next phase that we're doing. The Housing Authority is going to be going out with an advertisement to ask for developers to come in and partner with us. Now, those partners will come in, they will be thoroughly interviewed by a selection committee, and then we are going to be bringing that back to our board. And those will also go to City Council. We are targeting that RFP to be published sometime in May, so it will probably be about July when it actually comes to the board, but that Citizens Committee will be together to review those proposals. We continue to meet regularly with the Enterprise Partners, with Harold Fitzpatrick, our staff, and Mr. Ellis Wilson Henry from HUD. They get very active with us on all phases. We are also working on, with the Enterprise team, on projecting our management needs and positioning into 2023 and beyond. We're drafting a revised procurement policy with that team and also a file retention and organization review that was completed in March. The last part that I'll mention is that we are moving forward with obtaining what essentially is HUD's approval to move forward with the redevelopment on all of our properties. It is what's called a CHAP from HUD's standpoint. That's C-H-A-P, capitals. And we already have had the CHAP on Fox Hills, on Adams and Monroe, but now it's time in anticipation of redevelopment to get those official documents from HUD. We are on their approved list, but we haven't been issued official CHAPs yet. HUD's promise to us is that we will be issued them quickly once those are done. But as part of that process, we are going to be having a special series of resident meetings in May to present what's called a Resident Information Notice. Everyone will get this in the Housing Authority, and then we will have special meetings at all of our sites of the Housing Authority in May. The Enterprise Partner Team will be with us for those. They are coming into town for those. So they'll put that on your radar as you see those announcements. They're now tentatively scheduled for the first week of May, May 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. We're going to finalize that schedule in the coming week. As a matter of fact, Tuesday, we'll be finalizing that schedule, and we'll be going over those Resident Information Notices. For those of you that were with us through the Fox Hill project, we did intensive meetings on that for Fox Hill when we went over to Rad. Those Resident Information Notices lay out such things as the promise to do one-for-one replacement, the promise that people will be able to stay in their units, the promise that we will work together with the community through the whole process. So you'll see those coming out during May. The Housing for Hoboken Group met on March 24th. We went over financial statements for Fox Hills. Fox Hill is healthy, financially stable, and doing well. So thank you to the Fox Hill management and everyone concerned with that. Our special capital projects, we did, we are in process on the special allocation of capital funds for Harrison Gardens. We are, we've got the main entrance and gate replacement of the courtyard under design. We've got security camera installation on each roof, on each floor, and the rooftop under design. We've got the courtyard paving replacement under design, the hallway and stairwell refurbishment and painting, and other REACT issues. We have asked, I have asked the architectural firm that's working with us to prioritize the gate replacement in the courtyard and the security camera installation at each floor and rooftop. So we're going to be coming out with those first. Those are our main, those are our first steps, and I'd like to see those under construction by the end of summer. Our laundry installation was somewhat delayed. We hope to have that worked out by the end of April. We had told you last month it was coming in April. Now it looks like May. Our security system upgrades, now this is different than the Harrison project, we are in design on the camera system upgrades. Now, those camera system upgrades will entail some new cameras, but a big portion of that is our infrastructure. Our switches at each building need to be replaced. They're over 10 years old, their functional life is about eight years. We need to get those replaced in order to make sure our camera systems continue to work. We are designing, ready for a door replacement bid and sprinkler head bids coming out in the very near future. I will jump over for a second to this idea of UPCS inspections. Many of our residents know that we've been doing inspections on all of our units for our basic yearly HUD inspections, but also to recur ourselves for our next round of REACT. What we have found through those inspections is that we have a lot of interior doors that need work, we have a lot of sprinkler heads that need work. People have either painted over them, or there are some issues, they need to be replaced, all right? So we are going to be going out for contract on those, to have those done at one time across the board in preparation of REACT because it would take our staff just too long to do it. Our emergency generator works in process. Unfortunately, again, supply side, it doesn't look like the emergency generators are going to be delivered until the fall. All the prep work will be done, so when they do get here, they'll be put in quickly. And we are working on a boiler replacement design for Monroe Gardens. One of the issues with our UPCS inspections that I'd like to be very clear on is as we do our inspections and we find that we have work we must do inside the units, we must do that work. We must do that type of preventative work and go into your units and fix them. We have found some folks, as we have been doing it, that are refusing to allow us into their units. We need to go into the units and fix it. Even if you didn't call, when we find something on those inspections, please allow our staff to do what they need to do. We had somebody just today cussing out our staff, being very rude to our staff. It takes up a lot of our time, and it's a shame. So we ask everyone to work with our staff and make it happen so we can make a better place for you to live.
Director, I have a question on that if you don't mind.
Yes.
So if they're refusing to let us go in, right? So we go in, we identify the problem, we let them know this is the problem and it has to be fixed because it's in the inspection.
Yes.
Do we tell them, we'll contact you 48 hours before we come in, and whether you allow us or not, we can come in? Like, I think we have to disclose that to them, to let them know that whether you are giving us permission or not, this is a problem that needs to be corrected, and we're only obligated to give you 48 hours to enter the apartment anyway.
Yes, we do, and then people don't let us in anyway. So then we have to take the next step of a warning or a notice of cease and eventually enter the apartment. It's a tough issue. Anything else you want to say about that, Frank?
I can, uh...
Sam?
Sam?
Sorry. Yeah, Sam wants to discuss this issue.
Yeah, so the issue is for the UPCS inspections, there are 24-hour violations. We have to take care of them for 24 hours. So we, once we get our report, we got to tackle them right away, just so that we can return them on the 24-hour notice.
If your smoke detector isn't working...
If it's in work, then we got to go in and take care of it. It's not going to take us 10 hours to take care of it. We're just in and out.
And I can add to that, from a lease perspective, the Housing Authority has to provide reasonable notice, if possible, 48 hours, but in situations like that where it's a safety risk, it's code violation, then 24 hours certainly is reasonable notice.
So that's the only reason why we enter. And I mean, if it wasn't a 24-hour notice or a safety issue, we would have sent out notices to the residents. All right?
And please respect our staff as they do their work.
Yes.
On the management side, I'd like to mention that we have run, we have accepted applications to be put on the waiting list for efficiency and one-bedroom units. And if Frank would like to come up, we'd be glad to hear a little more about when we're going to be pulling the lottery.
Frank Merchant, MRCNJ. Yes, so our waiting list was open for 10 days. We opened up from April 27th through March 5th. Our goal is to be able to accept or get at least 300 applicants for Harrison Gardens and at least 300 for Fox Hill. We did get pretty close. The goal of this waitlist, so the goal of the waitlist is to be able to service as many people that we can do in two years, so that we don't have a 10-year waitlist that people won't be ready for when their number comes up. The goal is to only have as much people as we can service in a couple of years. So the results that have, what we received were totals are, if public housing, we received for the zero bedroom, 130 applications, out of which 56 were valid, and I'll explain that. Some folks who applied to the zero bedroom, all our zero bedrooms are in the senior buildings, so you must be senior or disabled. Some folks applied to it and they weren't eligible for that list. That's why out of the 130 people who applied to the zero at Fox Hill, 56 were eligible. But the good news about that is that all 56 made the list. So all 56 of those people who were eligible will be placed. They're not going to be cut out during the lottery process. So the good thing about that is that once the lottery runs for that, it's just a matter of giving them a placement based on the lottery results and their preferences. In the one bedroom for Fox Hill, I'm sorry, the first number I gave you, that was actually public housing. The 130 and 56 was public housing. So for the one bedroom, it's 468 families applied. More people were eligible of that percentage-wise, so it was 442, which means we do need to cut that down to 200. So out of that 442, about half of them will make it in. These are still preliminary numbers. We still need to do some assurance of what they presented, that they're disabled or whatever their preferences are. So once those numbers are run, we should have approximately 250, 256 families for public housing, which is a good number for us to be able to immediately start to house some of those folks. We have in the zero bedrooms, we don't have many, but we wanted to make sure that we had folks ready to go. In the one bedroom category, we do have a few more than in the other, but as people understand, the one bedrooms that we have are either in the senior building and in the family buildings where they are, we do have a lot of families doing the downsides as well. So as we pull from the list, I want to remind everybody that we always want to do three lease ups for one transfer, so we're going to continue that when we want. For Fox Hill, the numbers were 96 for the studio, out of which 60 were valid, so 60 were accepted, and 225 for the one bedroom, 143 were valid. So the whole count for the one bedroom and for the studios will make the list. There will be no cuts at Fox Hill. So everyone who has a valid application made the waitlist, which means we're just waiting and now want placements where they're going to go. So all in all, I appreciate everybody who put in an application, a pre-application. The lottery will be held next week. By the end of next week, lenders will go out, then we'll notify everybody whether A, did they make the list? B, if they didn't make the list, why? C, if you had, there were some instances where some people put in more than one application. So the folks who put more than one application, they're going to receive a letter. It's going to explain to them that only their first application will be used as an entry into the lottery. So you cannot have 10 tickets to the lottery, you can only have one. So once the lottery is run, lenders are going to go out. So by the end of next week, everyone will be able to know. If you would like to, you can either sign up for our portal through our website at myhhaj.com. If you go to the portal, you can apply and see your own progress on the waitlist. So we encourage people to go to the website and create an account, and they can follow their placement on the waitlist. And that's it on the waitlist. I'll let you guys have some questions.
I would like to note that, before we go to questions, that when we do the lottery, I'm going to treat it as a Subcommittee meeting for the Admissions and Continued Occupancy Policy Subcommittee, so those commissioners can be there to witness the actual lottery.
Great. That's what I was going to ask. You answered my question. Frank, you stated that the portal is now open, that we can create. Can we send something out to the residents, letting them know that they can create accounts on the portal? Because I know that we say it here, we've been saying it here for the last few months, that we're working on it and we're getting it done. But the truth is, how many of our residents are listening to this? Or we see how many are attending? So if we can just send a notice out to the residents, letting them know, just like you said, if you want to follow your own progress, then you can just create an account, and they don't have to go down to the main office or check with the managers to see what's...
And Barbara, in particular, this is for the applicant portal.
Okay.
But there is also a resident portal. So if you put in an application, I encourage you to open up a portal account for that. If you are a resident, open up a resident portal, and then there are other functions that you can see.
That's great. So I think we need to send that out to all the residents.
And if I may, since I'm up here already...
Flandre.
Part of what we're working on now is ACH form for folks to be able to do it. We are, we've gotten through all the bank issues. We've worked with the attorneys back and forth, and we're on our final draft that I believe we all are good with. So that is then going to send out a flyer, which is going to encourage and invite everybody, A, to join ACH, B, to join the portal. It's going to have instructions for the portal. We're also in that, as I mentioned before, we are going to have registration of pets, vehicles, and other things. So we want to kind of do a tie-in of all those things together. But yes, we are very excited that the ACH is about to... Now, let me explain. So ACH is so that anyone who has a checking account, you must have a checking account, can sign up for direct withdrawals of rent only. We will not pull fees or maintenance charges. The only thing that this system will be able to pay for is rent. And as we all know, our rent is based on annual income, so it can change from time to time. The beauty about that is that once you're set up for it, if your rent changes, you don't have to worry about the check. It updates automatically, and the next time your rent is pulled, the right amount will be pulled. So that's another really good feature.
That's good news.
And I would encourage, especially for the seniors, if you don't have an account, if you have a family member that would like to do that for you, they can do that as well. So we'll explain that in an offer letter, offer letter for that. And like I said, while I'm up here, one of the things that, for Andrew, I know that you had asked for an update on the tenant accounts receivable balances. What we have is, our current outstanding tenant account receivables is $950,000. We did still have 212 families that owe less than $1,000, 244 that owe between $1,000 and $9,999, 14 families that are over... 14 families that are over 9999. We have entered, since we started this process, into 115 repayment agreements. At the inception of these agreements, they were 650,000 dollars. We are now have a balance on those repayment agreements of 507. So we have now, since we started the repayment agreements, collected almost 150,000 dollars in payments of these repayment agreements. That's the good news of it. Unfortunately, as, I don't know if, um, in the beginning of, of this, uh, process, we talked about, we were going to offer letters, we were going to reach out to folks, we were going to take different steps. Uh, we're at the point, we're working with the attorneys to get that final letter to offer that repayment agreement to everybody that's missing. But an important piece of the puzzle was, once you enter into a repayment agreement, more importantly than entering into a repayment agreement, is to make your repayment agreement payments. Unfortunately, I'm seeing a trend that is alarming to me. The folks who are entering into repayment agreements aren't honoring your repayment agreement payments.
Not all of them.
Not all of them, but enough that I, we need to address this and we're going to be reaching out to everybody because in our wheel of where we were going, if you enter into a repayment agreement and now you are not making repayment agreements, now is when you need to sit down and unfortunately start scheduling some court dates for families. That's not what we want. For any family who has entered into a repayment agreement, we can still catch up and make payments now before the letters go out. But unfortunately, we're at that last step now. We continue to add families. The number of families that owe money, um, in, in that 950, when we first sat down and talked about it, it was a much larger number. But even though we entered into almost, you know, $700,000 worth of repayments, that number, the top number didn't change because new families became now, uh, in, in that, that were new families. So it's not as simple as, okay, I'm going to get the families that were there and then we're done. It's, it keeps growing and changing and moving and so we need to stay focused and we need to work together because we don't want the families to really.
Do I ask Madam Chair?
Sure, I just want to say we have two commissioners that are online that have to get off soon. So if there's any way that we can do the resolutions and then always come back and discuss this where we left off, I just don't want to leave the resolutions without.
Of course.
Is that okay? Is there anything specific? Is there anything specific I have to do?
Um, no, the director can hold the rest of his review until after you're done. You don't need to take any motion to suspend the agenda for that.
Perfect. So we can start, so we're going to move on with the resolutions. Um, resolution number 2023 0401, resolution of the Hoboken Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to approve the meeting minutes for March 9th, regular board meeting.
Motion.
Second.
We'll call?
Yes, we'll call the director.
Anthony Forbes.
Mr. Forbes?
Yes, yes.
Andrew Apostato?
Yes.
Aaron Lewitt?
Yes.
Barbara Reyes?
Yes.
Michael Russo? James Sanford? Erica Seitzman?
Aye. Resolution number 2023 0402, resolution authorizing the payment of the monthly list of bills for the Hoboken Housing Authority.
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns? Director, can you call the vote?
Reverend Anthony Forbes?
Yes.
Andrew Apostato?
Yes.
Aaron Lewitt?
Yes.
Barbara Reyes?
Yes.
Michael Russo? James Sanford? Erica Seitzman?
Aye. Resolution number 2023 0403, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to ratify the April 5th, 2023 award of an emergency contract for boiler replacement.
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns? Director?
Reverend Anthony Forbes?
Yes.
Andrew Apostato?
Yes.
Aaron Lewitt?
Yes.
Barbara Reyes?
Yes.
Michael Russo? James Sanford? Erica Seitzman?
Aye. Okay, those are the only resolutions.
So Madam Chair, you just might want to ask, uh, if there's any unfinished business or new business, um, while the, we still have a quorum.
Okay, so while we still have a quorum, is there any new business or unfinished business that any of the commissioners would like to discuss at this time?
Yeah, is there, um, Chairwoman, if I could?
Sure.
Is there any way we can, I think there's kind of an open ended question about the, uh, about the conferences, attending the conferences and the budget and how many, call a couple emails, go back and forth.
Yes.
Is there a way we can kind of tie that up and get a clearer answer on what you're, you're deciding to do or what, what we're trying to do?
Correct, well, my original thought stands. I believe that two commissioners should go to each of the, um, the conferences. Um, with that being said, it means that those commissioners that attend are to come back and report to the rest of the commissioners what had happened at the conferences, what they learned and what we need to learn. I am not in a place to tell the director of who administratively he would like to take on his, um, to these conferences. But as the board chair and the vice chair and I have discussed, I think we're both in agreement that two for each, um, conference stands.
And no more than two, sorry, Madam Chair, may I?
Sure.
And no more than two per year, so we, to give everybody a fair opportunity. Uh, like I said, one person on five conferences, we're going to ask you to go to two or less.
Yes.
So we are encouraging you to go to one, so we're not, not encouraging you.
Correct, so we want everybody to be, to have the opportunity, every commissioner to have the opportunity to attend these trainings. We do realize how important they are, especially in the phases that we are, uh, moving forward to with our redevelopment. But again, as I stated in my email, we also have to be, uh, mindful of our budget and what we are, what we're responsible for. So I think sending two is enough and two, um, and you can go attend at least two. That's not to say that if there isn't a commissioner or there's no commissioners that want to attend, that we wouldn't allow a commissioner that wants to go, to go. So, I don't know how you guys feel about this? If anyone else has any questions or any, anything else to say?
Yeah, no, that's, I, I, I appreciate that. I, I think it's, you know, you guys know where I, where I stand on it. And, uh, um, you know, it was, it was very clear that Director Recco, you mentioned that we have $35,000 in the budget for it. That it's, and, and how important it is from the, uh, from the.
Sorry, I'm just trying to do something here. A daughter.
We get it.
So he, he, I just want to make sure that, and I, you know, I want to make this clear that.
You're breaking up, Andrew, I'm sorry.
Yeah, am I still there?
Yes, yes.
I want to make it, I want to make it very clear noted that on the record that, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but Director Recco had mentioned that this is, this is something that HUD is in full support of, of, of spending $35,000. So I just, I just want to make sure that's the case. Uh, and that, you know, I know we're not on a good money equity standard, but I find it hard to believe that that would be the case, but, um, you know, it, he's saying that it's, that it's recommended and it's suggested that we go to these things. So if that's, if that's the truth, then I, uh, which I have no doubt in mind, uh, so, and I, I think so we do that. And if that's a professional opinion from HUD, that we attend these things, I'm all for it and I think that policy is no more than two attending is, uh, beneficial or pushing. Um, I'll tell you right now, if I attend one, I, I have no, no way I'm having any expense paid for by the housing authority. I'll pay for my own flight, my own, uh, hotel, food and travel. I, I in no shape or form think it makes any sense to be spending money on any type of travel, uh, being paid for by, and taken away from, you know, things that impact our residents over there. I mean, you look at that long list of all the appliances and all the things that are breaking, that our maintenance team has to like, you know, do wonders like on such a tight budget. I, I just think, I, I think $35,000 would be something that, you know, maybe we can save and apply to something and, and is there a way we could do Zoom? Can we attend these conferences on Zoom? Can we get downloaded material from what is spoken about at this conferences? If we were in financial hardship, I would say, oh yeah, let's get out there, let's get educated, let's, let's get ahead of the game. But, uh, that's my stance. So, uh, I just wanted to note that and I, I respect everything that Chair, Chairwoman Reyes has said towards this.
Thank you, thank you, Andrew.
I would just like to repeat that it is absolutely true, Commissioner. Um, and I would not have said it if it wasn't true, that HUD strongly recommends, if not requires us as a troubled housing authority. I think they see clearly that one of the reasons this organization got into troubled status uh, for, for, for many, many years was that training was not done. Um, any organization as large as ours with the complications of the programs that we, um, that we regularly administer, uh, not only the staff, but the board needs to be trained. We're going to be making decisions on nearly three quarters of a billion dollars over the next years. And we, the staff and board, need to be trained on what's going on nationally and how we can best approach these. So I will leave it at that and I'm sure, um, if anyone would insist, that I'm sure that our HUD rep would be more than happy to put that in writing. So thank you.
Thank you, Director. Yes, Michael Russo, can, can we put it on the record that Commissioner Russo has, is now in the meeting?
I'm sure. Thank you, and, and I apologize for being late. Uh, I, I just wanted to kind of chime in here. Um, Director, I absolutely agree with you. I think this, uh, authority, not only your staff, but the, the board itself, needs to be trained and educated as much as possible, especially with the undertaking that we see in front of us. Um, but I do appreciate, uh, Commissioner Apostato's, uh, comments and I appreciate the fact that for him personally, he feels the need, if he does attend any of those conferences, that he would pay for them and we welcome that. Uh, sometimes commissioners and/or staff just do not have the means to do that. Uh, but if they do, by all means, we, we welcome it as much as possible. Um, but I think it's imperative, I think you're right, Director. I think it's imperative that we all get trained as much as we possibly can. We have a huge undertaking before us and we cannot get it wrong. We need to get every aspect of it 100% right. So I am fully supportive of making sure we attend the conferences. I think the, uh, the Chairwoman came up with a great compromise to make sure that we all have the ability to attend these conferences and not too many people are going on all the conferences together. So, uh, we have the ability, I think we, we meet, we reached that middle ground where we have the ability to learn, bring some of that knowledge back to other commissioners and have other commissioners attend different conferences and do the same for us. So, uh, I, I think we found that middle ground, so I'm supportive of that.
Thank you, Commissioner Russo, Vice Chair Seitzman?
I think we should also look into, uh, as Commissioner Apostato said, there are, there's got to be Zoom trainings available and things like that, that we can have separate, just totally a separate from attending the trainings, maybe from the trainings that once we attend, we can, they might have things, resources available. But just think about New Jersey. So when we all became commissioners, what did we have to do? We had to go to training because if we didn't go to training, they'd kick you off. There's a reason for that. There's a reason why you can't be in this role without having any training. Oop, there's the water, without any training. So we need, the balance is there, but I think that we should be having more training. And if it, they used to have it in New York. It was, it's sad because they used to have it in New York, it would have been perfect. We could all gone right there, but they don't do it in New York anymore.
Commissioner Lewitt?
Well, you know, we, we need to be saturated with information. Mark and I went to a conference in Texas and it was around the clock. And we learned so much about RAG that on Zoom, we, we would have learned a fraction of what we learned. So we got to go.
I agree, I absolutely agree. I do like the Zoom idea. I do like that for, I guess, those that can't travel as much as others. But, um, I do, I do understand that being in person brings a different, um, level of understanding than actually being on Zoom and I respect that. Um, but again, I think that, um, with the people that we're sending to each of these meetings, um, to these, each of these conferences and what they have been asked to bring back, I think that we can successfully get through this project. And, um, and if we have further questions, I'm pretty sure if we get the, the presenter's information, we could always reach out to them and say, you know, these, these are the issues or this is what I, I didn't attend, I had a colleague attend, I have a question. I know that sometimes when I attend, um, conferences for my job, that happens and we have people email the presenters and they answer us back. So I'm just hoping that, um, we all agree on this. Is that it?
I have one question about what Frank was talking about.
Sure.
Is there any way that we can, when we have meetings for redevelopment or we have meetings for anything else, that we can explain to people, we don't want to evict you, we want, we, here's the process, we want to move you along, but if you don't pay, our hands are tied. This is not our rule, this is federal government rule, this is the federal rule. You have to pay 30% of your income. Um, because Frank was explaining before, we, how, how it's a problem. But when we're seeing people in these larger forums, or what's the way to do it? Is it better as small groups? Is it better working with the community with hopes? Is it better working with the churches, the, the civic groups? The, anybody that can reach people? Because we have been trying and Frank is saying it to the cows come home 100 times, 100 times. But who was going to listen? Who, who was going to get to that person so they can understand? Now is the time, this is what we have to do because our hands are tied. You're going to get an eviction notice. You will not be able to move when the redevelopment process. Legally, what could we do?
I, I get what you're saying, Erica. And the truth of the matter is, some people don't listen until they have that eviction notice on their door. And, and Matt, I think you can attest to that, that.
I'm not worried about that.
I, no, it's not that I'm not worried about it. Obviously, I think we both sat here time and time again and said the same thing. No one on this board, no one in the administration is here to evict anyone. But we do need to receive our payments and as such, we are trying our best to get that. If you choose not to do it and you have stated and you have decided to go into a plan, a, a repayment plan with the housing authority and you choose not to pay, then you tie our hands. We have done everything possible to help you, you tie our hands. And sometimes you have to get a little bit, you know, tougher on these, on, on us in order for us to do what we're supposed to do.
So as a resident, you think that's the best course of action? Is there anything that we're.
I think, I think as a resident and as a commissioner, I'm going to speak on both. I think the housing authority has done everything in their power to get these payments back. They have.
If I may, Madam Chair, uh, so Commissioner Frank touched on it briefly. The next and final step for anyone who hasn't responded yet is they will be getting a letter, a notice with essentially an offer of a repayment agreement saying, you haven't responded to our numerous requests. Here is this repayment agreement and essentially this is your last chance before the housing authority will be forced to file some sort of court action.
Also, there are people that have already gone into.
Right, yeah, and that's what, I, I'm going to get there next. So that, that will be, um, the step for those folks. Um, they will get that last opportunity. And as Madam Chair said, if people don't want to respond, they're not going to respond. And unfortunately, a certain percentage of those people, it's going to take the filing of a court action. Um, it's going to take the attorney's name on the piece of paper. It's going to take a court date to make it serious.
Reality.
Um, make them take action. And that's unfortunate and again, the goal is not to evict anyone. Um, but that's what it will take. For folks who have entered into that repayment agreement, this is a totally unusual step. Since we started representing the housing authority in 2015, the instruction to us has always been, we do not do in-house repayment agreements. Uh, if anybody does not pay, a court action will be filed and they are free in most cases, unless there's extraordinary circumstances, to enter into a court sanctioned repayment agreement, uh, stipulation agreement. And that's what's always been done. We didn't give the opportunity for in-house agreements. Here, because of COVID and everything going on and the fact that, um, people were dealt such, uh, curve ball, Here, because of COVID and everything going on and the fact that people were dealt such curveball, the housing authority made the decision to do that and that's why there are these in-house repayment agreements. We haven't actually come up with a specific plan for what the next step will be in terms of a notice, but they will be getting some sort of notification that they have violated that repayment agreement and essentially a last opportunity to get back on track. I don't want to put words in your mouth, Frank, but I would think that's where we're headed, before a court action is filed. So they again would get another opportunity to get back on track. But again, there are going to be some folks who, whether because they continue to have trouble, maybe didn't save the money, maybe have hit on hard times due no fault of their own, they can't make those repayments or they just choose not to. That the only thing that's going to get them to pay attention is that court notice.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Director, you can resume your.
Thank you all.
If I may, Director, I apologize for interrupting. I know Madam Chair mentioned before that we had a couple of commissioners that may need to depart. I will point out that now that Commissioner Russo is here, we do have a forum in the room. Reverend Forbes, I don't know if you're able to stay, but if you do need to leave, we have a forum.
Awesome, awesome. I'll hang up for another couple minutes.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you. On vacancies, we had 11 total move-ins in public housing and no move-outs this past month. Our vacancy reports are attached. We had one move-in at Fox Hill. We continue to be at that 95, we're about a 95 to 96% occupancy rate, which is excellent, which we will continue to have. Our housing choice vouchers, we are kind of retooling our efforts to get this, request for proposals for project-based vouchers out. We're having some internal meetings again and we're going to try to push that to get that out in the next 30 to 60 days. I think that's important. We've had other items in the fire, but it's time for me to push that. One of the reasons is we did get our 2023 budget for the Housing Choice Voucher Program from HUD. It looks good. It allows us to get a little extra money, maybe an extra unit or two in there. So you're going to be seeing that coming at you over the next month or so. In maintenance, we continue to look for building maintenance workers if anyone ever wants to apply. We've been actively working this month on modifying our work order system. We had some conversation at the last board meeting. Staff has gotten together and done some strategizing. We really believe that returning to a central work order call-in system would be beneficial if you know right now, each site calls their manager's office for work orders. We used to have a one phone number for work orders and I believe that there's a gap that's happened there. And so we're going to switch that back, not yet, wait for us to announce it, but we're going to switch that back to one number for all work orders to call in. We'll allow residents that call in a work order request at that one spot to immediately get a work order number so we can better track it and allow our staff and the residents to track that work order number when it comes in. We are going to need to get a staff person down in maintenance to make that happen. Because maintenance, we've kind of gutted that, moved that out to the sites. So we're going to have an extra staff member to take all of those work orders and work on responding to any request and expedite any work order questions. You'll see that coming soon. And again, if anyone wants to apply, we're going to be looking for a clerk-type position over in maintenance. We're bidding out work for our four-month cycle of floor stripping. That bid document is almost ready to go out. Our concept there is to have an outside company, very simply and directly, come in to each one of our buildings on a three- to four-month cycle, strip, wax every one of our floors, come out the other side. So our maintenance crew, can they maintain that in between those? But we have a crew come in, it's very easily definable. We get those floors good, we get them right on a three- to four-month schedule and then our staff maintains in between. I think it'll be money well spent. Our building maintenance crews have been performing a deep disinfection and painting of all of our compactor rooms. This works almost complete for every single compactor room. This is not only a vermin issue, but it's a rodent issue. Make sure our compactor rooms are as clean as possible. We've been holding our staff accountable for keeping them clean. I think as Joseph Moraro has come on as our building maintenance crew supervisor, we've seen some real progress in those areas. Our maintenance and cleaning crews, as time allows this month, will be performing a test clean and paint project at one of our three-story walk-up buildings. We do have one of our buildings which we believe is the worst right now. We're going to go in and we're going to keep good track of what it takes to go in and actually disinfect, clean, prep and paint a three-story walk-up. So we'll be able to respond back to you on the more interesting question of how we can get all of that done. The last bid that we got, estimate we got from a company for all of our hallways and all of our stairwells was right at the $1 million mark. So all of our stairwells under a contract is huge. Remember, when you go to paint, you just don't stop on paint. You know, you've got to prep the walls, you've got to fix the walls, you've got to do a lot of issues. So as an ex-painter by trade, I understand how much work that is there, but we're moving forward.
So we could save money, right?
We could do it. We could do it. Yeah.
Do you want to help, Director? You should not have to do that.
As a matter of fact, I listen about every third Thursday. We do have our reports here on our maintenance plumbing projects by the housing authority staff as an attachment and the major unit repair special projects by our staff. I'd just like to, as we come to the end of my report here, again emphasize by those attachments I put there for you, how much work our staff does beyond normal maintenance work. HUD funds us at a level of normal maintenance work. Not our plumbing breaking down every week, our stacks breaking down, our supplies breaking down. And I think Sammy, without using names, could you give an example of what happened to you today?
Well, today we had a sewer wasteland that broke off on the fifth floor affecting all the floors below. Getting resistance again from one of the residents not allowing us to enter the unit, excuse me, not allowing us to enter the unit to be able to address this issue.
So you had a leak below, found out it went from the fifth floor to the first floor.
All the way down to the first floor.
Didn't want to let you in.
Yes. So I got resistance and, you know, it only held us back an hour probably to try to get to that wall and repair that pipe, only because they didn't want us to enter. So, I mean, these stack pipes are not, they're not new, you know, and we're going through this every day. We try to take them, cut them up, replace them with PVC. I mean, in all certain areas, boiler rooms are adjusted, we're not to use PVC in boiler rooms, but in the units inside, and not only fixing the pipes, we would have to cover up the walls on top of that. And it's not minor work.
And there was damage on the first floor unit from the fifth floor. You had to open up the kitchen wall?
Bathroom walls, I opened up. Two bathroom walls and the whole soffix of one first floor completely dropped. And we use the greenboard, which is waterproof sheet rock, it dropped it with no problem.
So one of the walls completely collapsed?
One of the walls completely collapsed, exactly.
And one of the soffics, this took up their, again, I just want to emphasize what our folks are doing out there.
The whole morning, actually.
Huge.
We're actually very lucky that he can do this work. Can you imagine if we had to bid this out? Like, thank you.
The guys as well. It's not just me, you know, the guys. We tried to tackle everything, everything.
I appreciate you, Sam, and I appreciate your staff. Thank you. You folks do more than is known out there. We're continuing to work on our extermination issues every day. We're continuing to fill the holes. We're continuing to put traps in. I think the rodent issue is just huge, all over Hoboken, right?
It is, all over. I'm lucky, but we don't have the man bag. I don't have the man bag. Thank God. I don't.
I have them.
I know, not on wood, but I went by Harris and Gartner and I was screaming through the whole thing. It was huge.
Oh man, scary. Maintenance is also working on a spring cleaning of all the kitchen basins, cleaning out all of our kitchen basins. Starting to put in accessible bathroom doors. Before you leave, press the button on the women's bathroom here.
It works?
It works. So we now have, we're now putting accessible doors on all of the bathrooms and the community rooms and we are power washing through all of our playgrounds. That power washing is going to be done over the next few weeks. We don't have a set schedule. You're going to do it Tuesday and Thursday. Sammy and his crew, as they get a decent day, get the power washing, they're going to be going ahead and doing that power washing on all of our playgrounds over the next few weeks.
I want to say thank you, Director, because I actually had residents approach me this week about the playgrounds and having them power wash, especially the one on Fifth Street that's used and the one behind Fourth and Jackson by the field. Those, I want to say, are the ones that are used the most and they really do need to be.
If we have a good weekend, yeah.
So we just actually had a company come out to give us a proposal to prepare one of our, which is the one part. It's a safety issue, so that's the only reason why we have it off. Hope it should be put in soon. Once that gets on, I'd probably say by the next week, the following week, we're going to get that going. But before that, we're going to disinfect all the swings and disinfect everything. So when the floor is done, it's just open and let's go.
There's also a swing there by the fourth street one that's like hitting.
Yes, so those are, those have to be at a specific height. So the goals, specific boards that we make, this company will provide us with the height adjustments that need to be done. But yeah, it is, and it works.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Our finance department is working on the 2022 audit field work is starting this month, so our auditors are in. I do want to thank management and particularly finance who pushed it. We have finally sent monthly statements out. The first ones were last month and they will continue. I think it went well. Staff spent some real extra time this month, sitting down with folks, explaining their statements, how those statements work. I'm glad we got there with that and we are working toward the direct debit payment as Frank mentioned earlier. And last but not least, I would like Mr. Perez to come on up and talk about resident services.
Hey, everyone. Thank you so much. So I wanted to echo Chair Reyes' sentiments regarding the loss of Madison and also, I know Joseph Andrews, also known as Sidney. The director and I attended Madison's funeral. The director and I attended Madison and also Wade's funeral service. It was extremely, extremely sad for us. We really do feel for our family and as a resident, as a resident and also an employee of Hoboken Housing Authority, you know, I'm always trying to connect to our residents and express my most heartfelt condolences for every member of our family that is lost, especially such a young star in Madison who was also recognized during our Black History Month as one of our top students at the Hoboken High School. Congratulations Madison and the family. Let's keep Madison's family alive. Just quickly, I wanted to speak on the Hoboken Public Library. They're a phenomenal partner. Their outreach service has been incredible to us. They have provided resources and services that we need, extremely professional. Also, they have a social work department that continues to be responsive and resourceful in helping the housing and building residents, you know, get identifications and other needed services from the county. So we really want to thank Director Jenny and her amazing staff, also my desk with Laura and Sasha, who continue to support all of our activities and programs at the housing authority. Talked about the library. We are coming together for an amazing event, kind of like our Spring Fest talent show, April 29th, at the Hled Braxton Community Courtyard, formerly 311 Harrison Street Courtyard, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Please join us. We're hoping to showcase some of our resident talent. If any of our commissioners would like to join us and maybe share with our community some of your talents, if you can juggle or flip or sing, whatever. Looking forward to that. And that's going to be April 29th. We're also going to use that event actually as an opportunity to begin registering our residents for the summer outings. Thanks to Councilman Ruben Ramos, he has provided transportation for these events. We're going to go to Valdade City. We're heading fishing trip and this is led by Joe McDonald. And we're also going to go back to an amusement park. We met with the Resident Advisory Board this month. We chatted about some of the upcoming programs and services and we decided on an amusement park, which we'll soon be announcing to our community. Let me also say about the Resident Advisory Board, they're an amazing advocate for all of our residents. You might not necessarily see them in all of our meetings and programs, but when we get together with the leadership staff, believe me, we get grilled, you know? But it's a wonderful relationship that we have because we're all looking forward to ensuring that the quality of life for all of our residents moves forward. So really thankful for the Resident Advisory Board and how we work together to ensure that at least we improve the quality of life for all of us. And just quickly, just wanted to touch on one more thing that I have here. Let's see. Well, I think that's it for me. I think I'm going to quit for today. Thank you so much.
I'm not sure what Ms. Waiters was saying about the county commissioners in regard to funding. Because we don't have all of that information and I understand what she was asking for. Is there a way we could, see, you can't take, there's apples and oranges and apples and oranges both can't. So you don't necessarily want to take something away from somebody. But if you look at the budget and we could say, why not give us a piece of the pie, right? We don't want to take it away from the Boys and Girls Club who also service our students, our kids. But we also want to give some to the amazing marquise who was just here doing amazing things. I don't know if it's too late and I don't know if we could have.
That's something that Commissioner Romano, I think, would.
Yeah, and I may just be a little lost in where we started this conversation, but as far as the funding for specifically why and from where?
It was from the county and I believe that Ms. Waiters stated it was like for their basketball, their basketball as well as their summer program. So, and I know that the county has provided the Boys and Girls Club for years with this funding. And I absolutely agree with Erica that it's definitely not something where we want to go in and say, no, we don't want you guys to have it because they do service our children. But if we can get something for our housing authority to service our residents, like we started our own league and it would be beneficial to us for us to have that.
And we don't know if that was a specific grant or anything like that or was it just a...
It was a grant. The next was like before last year, the same mess. But now there's 143. So they give y'all those thousands of dollars. Gabby's paying for your growth stuff.
It could be a block grant that's relatively...
No, it's not. We're not as sure, so we can't, we don't know, so we're trying to assist, but we don't know.
If we could look into it.
Yeah, we'll look into it. And I'll communicate with Commissioner Romano.
And then maybe, I'm not sure how that would work, but if we could, if you could put the right players together, we could have an adult conversation about it, that would be helpful.
I definitely want to put it on the record that we...
That would be good, too.
I definitely want to put it on the record that we are not here to take it away from the Boys and Girls. We just want to make sure that...
And listen, I mean, when we talk about funding...
I don't think I said that. Did I say that?
Exactly. No, no, I just want everyone to know that that's not what we're trying to do. We're trying for everyone that's willing and wanting to help work with our youth, which we need it, gets a piece of the pie. That's it.
Everything above and beyond what's being funded currently for our organizations and any other organizations. We're looking for something in addition to what we already have.
Especially for our basketball league because it's the perfect timing, so we can talk about that at another time. But you know, this is all timing together, keeping people busy over the summer, inviting the funding for that.
Yep. Sounds good. Very good.
That's it. We're done. We are done.
Motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second?
Wait, wait. We voted on all resolutions?
Yes, we do. All in favor?
Aye.
You came in for the discussion.
You came in for the discussion, Mike.